District Study Session. I call this meeting to order at 5:30. Mr. Noon, please take role.
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Baydun?
Here.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Seba?
Here.
Madam Chair, of course.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Noon. I wanted to do some housecleaning before we started the meeting. We need to set up the dates for Dr. Masalum's... For the...
Goals.
For the goals, sorry. So if we can pull up the calendar and agree to a date, is it okay to do this next week? Because I know we have to do this quarterly, so we really don't have a lot of time. If everybody can, before we get together, pick the five goals and then we can sit with Dr. Masalum and let him know what the expectations are.
Yeah, so we have a security meeting on the 18th, right?
Yes.
Or, yeah, the 18th. And Monday is a holiday.
Yes.
Wednesday, a community meeting in the evening.
Okay. So let us know what is good for you, Dr. Masalum, and we'll go from there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
How long would Dr. Masalum need to send us a recommendation of goals so we can review as well? That might... You might need some time for that, right?
Um, if I was to send a recommendation of goals, I could do that next week or at the end of this week. Actually, the end of this week might be difficult. I'm looking at my calendar right now.
Mr. Noon, go ahead. I was just going to ask, I thought we were doing them together. Was that the goal?
We were supposed to...
I thought we were doing them together. All right.
Yeah, we're going to do them together. I'm saying at least a recommendation from him prior, right? Would help.
I thought we should do them together and then we can... We can bounce off each other and see what everybody's... But you should come in with your priorities.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah, and then we can get feedback from Dr. Masalum and move from there.
And I do want to mention, though, one thing is, in the future, I mean, like for this year, you know, the goal is to have the evaluation and everything done in November, which then gives the month of December to do the goals, which then the quarterly revalued starts.
January.
Where January, you can start working on those.
Right.
So I just want to, just timeline, because we're behind this year, because we're, you know, even if we get those goals established, let's say, and I want to talk about action steps, because that's what they had mentioned, that there are more of action steps than goals. If we put those action steps together and the board approves those action steps, even on the June 24th meeting, the first, the January 24th meeting, the first quarter will only give us one month of work. I'm just stating that it's still going to be a short time span between March and when the action steps are approved.
Well, that's how he recommended it.
Well, it should give you two months. Right? It'll go till the end of January, uh, end of March?
So it would go to, it would have to actually either go to the board meeting March 14th or the first board meeting in April, because we have spring break the following week. We only have one board meeting in March, uh, two, well, February 28th, March 14th, and then we have another board meeting, um, on April 18th. And that's because of spring break and all that other stuff.
If we, if I can, let's set the date for our first goal-setting meeting, and then at that meeting, we can set our timeline.
Whatever you'd like. I'm just saying, just because you mentioned the quarterly, that's all.
Yeah, that's what's expected of us. So let's start with the first date to set the goals, and then on that date, we can all discuss, um, the timeline.
What about Thursday, the 20th? Anybody?
I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that as well. So I was just going to say, I mean, at the end of the day, just to stay on track, we have to understand that it's not going to be the full, you know?
Yeah.
Which I think we all, we all know that. So I mean, just to stay on track with the timeline and doing it quarterly.
Well, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I mean, even if you think about it, when we do the evaluation, we do the evaluation when, November, December?
It should be completed by November, so we can develop action steps in December.
Yeah, so even that quarter will be a little bit short, too.
True, good point.
I mean, we can just take a look at the months at that meeting and then divide it up. Take our own quarters.
So January 20th, are we looking at 5:00?
5:00 o'clock.
Okay.
So the date is January 20th, 5:00, um, here at Riverside?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, now we can move on to, uh, we're going to move into a closed session, unless you have something before?
No, after.
No? Okay, all right. I move to enter a closed session under Section 8E to discuss settlement of the pending arbitration of Best Asphalt Inc. versus Crestwood School District. With the school district's money, as doing so, an open session would be in the district's best financial interest and also for personnel matters.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Kaminsky?
I make a motion that we move to closed session to discuss personnel and the lawsuit support.
Uh, we have a motion on the table for Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Elzayat, to move into closed session for the purpose of personnel matters and litigation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
May I make a comment first, Madam Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Please. I wasn't here when all of this happened, but I do want to make sure that we are able to discuss this with the public if we're going into closed session. We won't be able to discuss the details, but the public needs to know the specifics of what's happening here.
Well, that's the reason we have to go into closed session, is because it's still in litigation.
I understand.
And we can't discuss it until litigation makes that decision.
Okay, so after the, um, after the agreement?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, all in favor, signify, we already voted, so if we can move into closed session, please. Okay, welcome back. We're coming out of closed session. If I can have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Kaminsky?
I make a motion that we return to open session.
Support.
Uh, we have a motion for Ms. Kaminsky, support for Ms. Elzayat, that we return from, um, closed session and go into open session at 6:49. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Dr. Masalum?
Madam President, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Elzay right now, as she will introduce our presenter from Trune Law Firm to discuss, uh, possibility of using Trune for our policy review.
Thank you.
And I can pass this out for you.
So at the board's request, with looking into, uh, policy review, um, in order to update board policies, there were two organizations that we reached out to in order to gain further information, and Mr. Davis is here representing Trune Policy this evening, so I will turn it over to him.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for having us, and, uh, thank you for, um, considering our policy service. So Trune Law Firm, we're a law firm in East Lansing primarily, with an office in Novi and an office in Grand Rapids, uh, and we do almost exclusively K-12 school district work, as you know. We've done, worked with you guys for a number of years, um, and I, it surprised me when I pulled up and I saw Roy Henley leaving.
Yeah.
And I was like, well, I didn't know you were going to be here. I'd have just had you do the policy service, uh, presentation tonight. We noticed, um, probably four or five years ago, that, um, that our school districts were having, we, by the way, we have on retainer over 500 K-12 school districts in the state. So we, um, we don't exclusively represent all the school districts, but we have that many on retainer and do a portion of their legal services. So a lot of school districts will, let's say, use us for labor and finance and then use someone else for special ed or, you know, someone local maybe for property. But we have a, we have a piece of over 500 school districts. And one thing that we were noticing was that the governance, uh, in our school districts were experiencing, um, some real significant, uh, challenges, self-inflicted by their policy sets. The policy sets were enormous. You couldn't understand, uh, what was, um, even required in certain specific policy sets. Uh, we had policies, uh, that used very ambiguous terms, uh, and policies that, um, were really creating difficulty, um, just in terms of governance. So for example, uh, we were noticing that a lot, a lot of school districts had a, an unlawful harassment policy for employees that included bullying. Well, bullying is not a discrimination concept, it's a student discipline concept that's distinct from discrimination and harassment in the employment setting. And by, by mixing up those concepts, it was creating difficulty for our school districts. We had the, another policy that we were noticing was that, uh, there was, um, a policy on, on, uh, her, or on intimidation, um, and threatening behavior, and that policy, uh, basically said that an employee could not, uh, cause another, or cause, um, uh, you know, mental anguish in another, another employee. And you may have that particular policy, or may not cause significant stress in another employee. Well, anyone given an evaluation, or anyone disciplining someone, is going to cause stress or is going to arguably, uh, you know, inflict, um, uh, mental fear, even if that discipline is warranted. So the concepts, while we, while we appreciated what those policies were trying to do, because they were ambiguous, uh, people were using those policies to make things very difficult for boards and for administration in terms of how to deal with, uh, the particular issues at play. So for example, there's a, there was a public, I represent Mount Pleasant Schools, for example, and there was a, a policy on public complaints that in essence gave a grievance procedure, uh, to the employees, uh, and to the general public to challenge, uh, matters almost through a grievance procedure like employees having a collective bargaining agreement. Now normally, when we're talking about board governance, it's, it's generally the board president and the board as a whole that set the agenda, and members of the public can't necessarily put themselves on as an agenda item, and the policy did that. We saw one policy that would say one thing about harassment, and an administrative guideline that would say another thing about harassment. Or we would see, uh, a policy on discipline that was very complicated in terms of the procedure you needed to follow in order to, uh, fact-find or to give due process, and, uh, and it was just creating difficulty in terms of how you dealt with, uh, you know, your particular workforce. So we got together, we got all of our attorneys together, and said, look, we've got, we've got a lot of these complaints that are occurring, um, in school districts. The valid ones are difficult to process because the policies are cumbersome. The, uh, invalid ones are difficult to process because the policies are cumbersome. We need clear policies that implement, uh, the legal standards, and no one in the state knows the legal standards better than we do. And we had requests from all sorts of districts, uh, to draft a policy set, and we tried not to do that, and, uh, you know, I think two years ago, we just finally said, we're going to, we're going to invest in it, and we're going to do it, because we need to help board governance. Uh, we didn't really need more work, but we really felt we could do a service for our school districts in terms of, uh, making real clear procedures and policies, uh, so that everyone that looked at them would understand what they needed to do, when a standard was being violated, what you needed to do to follow a particular standard. And so, uh, we put together a team of 10 attorneys that worked on student issues to get the most up-to-date policies on student issues. We put together a, a group of 10 attorneys to work on employment issues. We got a group of 10 employees to work on just school district, uh, governance and property issues. We got a group of attorneys to look at bylaws. And we did, um, we went through, uh, an eight or nine-month process in drafting the policies. Then we did a cross internal review to make sure that everything was legally accurate and used the best, best practices, uh, so that our school districts, uh, really could be state-of-the-art in terms of appropriate governance. And then, uh, we, we, uh, we had a couple of attorneys that had recently retired, uh, that had just seen it all in their careers, and we retained them back, and we said, you guys give a thorough review of the policies, and you guys give us feedback as to what would be the best policy set for school districts. And, uh, I could show you the box, but the result of our work, uh, I can bring it out for you, but, uh, is the policy set that you are now considering tonight. We believe it corrects a lot of the governance issues. Uh, we believe that it is, uh, the most up-to-date, excuse me, most up-to-date policy set in terms of, of the appropriate legal standards and implements best practices. Then we also spent year two drafting administrative guidelines and form sets. And the administrative and guidelines and form sets are designed to lead administration or the board through difficult issues. So it's got checklists, and it's got forms. So for example, if you have a disabled employee and you're required under the Americans with Disabilities Act to begin implementing the interactive process, there's a form concerning exactly what you need to do to follow the interactive process, so that you're appropriately considering reasonable accommodation requests, and you're appropriately considering that employee's concerns. You know, we've got step-by-step on student issues, free speech issues, student discipline issues, uh, so that, um, uh, so that those standards are clear and so that administration can follow those standards. We tried very hard not to be redundant in our policies and to organize them, so that it's easy to find where stuff is located. So for example, we have the bylaws up front, so if you look at, here's what I've given you. I've given you a table of contents of the policies. I've given you a checklist, and I'll talk to you about what we do with a checklist. And then I've given you the administrative guidelines and forms that sort of describes what they are. So if you look at the first document I gave you, which is the table of contents, you see that our policies are set up concerning, uh, you know, first, the description, purpose, and board organization in the, in the, uh, 2000 series, which is the bylaws, well, actually, you have a policy overview in the 1000 series, but you have the bylaws in the 2000 series that have the purpose, organization of the board, the board powers, board member conduct, board member membership and dues, uh, board meetings and the Open Meetings Act, what you need to follow. In the 3000 series, we have operations, finance, and property. In the 4000 series, we have district employment, so all the standards concerning employment. And then in the 5000 series, uh, we have students' curriculum and academic matters. Now you look in the employment rights, for example, if you look at, um, some policy sets, we'll have a section for, um, support staff, including their civil rights, a section for teachers, including their civil rights, and a section for administrators, including their civil rights. So if you have a change, for example, in the Family Medical Leave Act, or the ADA, or Elliot Larson, you need to remember to make the changes in all three places, they need to match, uh, you need to make sure that you make those changes in your administrative guidelines. We're looking to simplify that. So we have, for example, in the, in the 4000 series, in the 4100s, you have all of the employee rights and responsibilities, including civil rights. In the 4200s, we've got, uh, employee conduct and ethics. Then in the 4300s, we've got non-exempt, which are hourly staff, and all of, and the, and the conduct and the civil rights sections beforehand apply to them. Then you have your professional staff, and again, the conduct and the civil rights sections apply to them. Then you have administrators, and then you have the superintendent, and again, the conduct and the civil rights sections apply to them. So it's all tied into one place in the 4000 series with up-to-date legal standards, uh, so that, um, uh, so that it, so that it's very clear, it's not redundant, and, um, it's more efficient, and it's more pithy. Uh, so that's, that's what we did with our policy set. Then if you go to the third document I gave you, which is the table of contents for the guidelines and forms, uh, you will see, uh, the proposed, all of these Fs are different forms that we have for administration or our board to follow, uh, to deal with the particular issues that may, uh, implicate either the bylaws or the operations of finance or, uh, just, or, uh, district, uh, employment or students' issues. So for example, if you look at the 4000, uh, student issues, uh, we have an administrative guideline that has the employment complaint procedure, but then we have, uh, now I'm on page two now, the second line, um, under the 4000 series, we have 4104 F2. That is an employment complaint procedure investigation checklist. So for example, we've given a checklist to our administrators, so that they know exactly what they need to assure that they've looked at, uh, when doing an employment misconduct investigation. The next document, which is a form, is a sample outcome letter that you need to follow pursuant to state or federal law. So we've, we've really, what we've done is we've taken a lot of the advice that we normally give on a day-to-day, uh, basis, and tried to load that advice into our forms, so that our administration or our board can go right into the forms and can follow those checklists and can be in compliance with state and federal law. Okay? So that was the idea behind it, was to, you know, really give our districts the ability, uh, when they're doing, um, uh, something that they may not normally, uh, not, something they may not do on an everyday basis, to have before them a checklist, a procedure, or sample letters, so that they do it right, so that they don't create, uh, you know, little hooks to create legal issues with their particular circumstances. We are not an online service. Uh, you can either put the policies in a PDF, uh, on the district website, or we recommend, uh, that you also subscribe, uh, to Boardbook, uh, which is the MASP platform. The reason why we like that, we, we had, uh, extensive conversations with Boardbook before implementing our policies, and when we do updates, they have a click-and-drag function, so that we can do updates in a very simplified fashion, uh, so that you don't have to go through a series of meetings and, and, uh, uh, you know, administrative delay in implementing or updating policies, uh, as, as, as we know, our policy sets sometimes need to be updated frequently. Then we created a checklist, and this checklist is designed to allow you to, um, make choices in the policies, to make the policies, um, uh, really your own. So there's different choices that you can make in terms of, um, uh, you know, periods of time, or what's going to be allowed, or what isn't going to be allowed, and, uh, this checklist helps you do that. And so what we do is if someone purchases our subscriber process, we hold the equivalent now, it seemed novel at the time, we started two years ago, but the equivalent of Zoom meetings, and we hold them on a monthly basis, and we get our attorneys, an expert in each area, to walk everyone through the checklist to make the choices that you would like to make to personalize the policies to your community or to your district. And oftentimes, we will, uh, get boards that will say, well, I would like this, we, we have this special thing in our policy that's really good, uh, we would like to maintain that in, in our, our policy set. And then our attorneys work with the board to draft it, to make sure that, uh, the language is legally compliant, and then we will, you know, we will formalize that into, into your policy. You can, your board can attend as many of these sessions as they want, as, as your board members want. You can have, uh, as many administrators or board members that you want attend these sessions. Uh, when we do a Zoom, oftentimes we'll have clients and all sorts, uh, you know, from across the state that are zooming in. Uh, we have some clients that, for example, have monitored before purchasing, have monitored, uh, you know, one of these implementation sessions, uh, you know, to, to see the sort of, uh, information and feedback that is gleaned from, you know, those particular sessions. Uh, we've gotten real positive feedback, uh, because our boards feel like, in essence, you have the opportunity to speak with an attorney, uh, expert in each particular section during each of these sessions, as much as you want to make sure that you're comfortable with the policies, that you understand the policy. Usually, the biggest problem with the policies when they are expansive is that, um, uh, our districts just don't understand them. I can't tell you the number of calls I get. I've been practicing at Trune since, um, 1999. I practiced for 13 years in North Carolina, uh, and then came back home to Michigan. My dad was an administrator. Like, a lot of Trune attorneys' parents, our parents are usually either teachers or administrators. Uh, my, my dad was a high school principal. And, um, uh, you know, we, um, uh, you know, we, uh, have that sort of, uh, background or that sort of look, uh, you know, when we put this policy set together, we wanted to have, uh, at least an administrator or whoever, or have, have someone, um, that's a non-attorney be able to look at it and to be able to understand it. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback about our implementation meetings, that that's what's hap, that's, that's what happens. Okay? Yes?
Really quickly, Mr. Davis, if you could speak to, um, the initial process, because I believe in addition to those monthly meetings, if, if the, if the board were to decide, um, to go through the purchase of the policy with Trune, that there was some initial, uh, face-to-face time as well? So if you could speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so if you, if you, um, you know, fill out a form, uh, and you purchase the Trune, Trune set, you know, an attorney, uh, you know, will give you a call, and you'll have an opportunity to have a discussion with that attorney. Uh, we have also our policy subscribers, uh, if they have a conversation about a policy, uh, those conversations are free concerning a specific policy regarding, you know, how it's interpreted, et cetera. But yes, you do have an opportunity, uh, to have an initial discussion, uh, about, you know, what likely will make sense. But I'll, I'll be honest with you, those monthly sessions are where people really, you know, you get, you're in a meeting with, you know, maybe two other districts or people from other places, and there may be questions that are asked that, uh, that, you know, you may not have thought of, or we may not have thought of, and those really wind up being just really, really valuable meetings. really valuable meetings in terms of understanding the policies and deciding what choices to make. Yes?
So I'll just be really honest. Our policies have not been looked at with very few exceptions since 2005. When the policies, I am told, were set up, the philosophy was less is better, and so they are very thin, they don't go into a lot of detail, and it was done intentionally not to make it so that everything was micromanaged. So having said that, an initial phone call, and maybe a phone call here and there may not be enough because we really would need someone to look at what we have and to kind of understand it and guide us in our review. So my question is, in looking at your checklist, does Trune think that more is better because a lot of this seems very constrictive for administration? I'm just, I'm thinking-
Yeah, we're somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
So there's, I think where we, we believe our policies are best practice in terms of what needs to be there to be legally compliant, but which doesn't overly constrain the ability of the administration of the board to do what it needs to do to personalize a particular It's, you know, so for example, you know, your FMLA, our FMLA policy, or our PMLA policy, so our family medical leave policy in Michigan, we have a paid medical and leave act policy. We're required to have those policies. If we don't have certain things in those policies, then the employee gets to choose what particular benefit they want. We have those included in the policy, though we allow the districts to make a choice, for example, on the leave year, et cetera, so that it's in the policy, so that if we get audited, they're going to say, yeah, you do have a policy on this particular issue. Or so, for example, Wage and Hour, Fair Labor Standards Act. In fact, I just went through a Department of Labor audit with another school district concerning, you know, appropriate overtime requirements, et cetera, and they didn't have a policy on it. We have a policy on it so that basically complies with the law, so that if the Department of Labor comes in at audits, they say, you know, you're in good shape with that. That said, we are not real detailed on every aspect of every circumstance that exists because you can't, you can't list every contingency on every problem that you have in your policy.
Right, and I wouldn't want you to. I just, when I scanned through this, and I can't tell you the policy number, one of them was about how long you post jobs for openings. Well, we might post a job for one thing for X amount of days, and for something else, do it for 10 days. So it's not like all jobs fall into one category, and when I looked at that, it kind of set a red flag.
Yeah, so the answer is, is that there's no real legal requirement for posting for a minimal amount of time unless it's in a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
And it has to be followed in a collective bargaining agreement. So I think you'll see in our policy, it says, look to the collective bargaining agreement and see what it says.
Okay.
So we want, instead of an administrator calling me and saying, and I always say, first thing, what do your policies say? And then, what policy set do you have? All right, well, we have da-da-da. All right, let's look at it, let's get online, let's look at it. Yeah, boy, this is difficult, I'm not quite sure what this means. We want an administrator to say, okay, I've got a posting issue, I'll go to posting. Oh, I look at the collective bargaining agreement, but otherwise, I've got discretion to set what I want to set.
Okay.
So again, we had, we had 10, 15 labor attorneys, all in an office debating what's the best policy for each of these employment. We had 10 or 15 student discipline, student school specialists, special ed specialists sitting in a room and debating what's the best policy on this. So that's, that's kind of how we approached it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yes?
Okay, so I guess what I want to understand is, you've already got the policies, we would purchase them from you?
Correct.
You wouldn't sit with us and go over the policies with us and make the, like, adopt things that we want? Or do you just give us the policies and then we would have to call you? You're not, would you sit with us and actually go through these?
If a district wants us to sit with you initially to help you understand, we will do that.
Okay.
We generally recommend, though, that you sit in a policy implementation meeting because you have a subject matter expert on each section, go through each section and go through each policy and explain it. And you can have as many people as you want in it, and if you're not comfortable, and you can ask as many questions as you want of the subject matter expert concerning your policies, and if you, and then the next month, you can do it again, if you felt like you didn't get enough information. So, so the, so yes, we could do that. We could sit with you and explain, but it's really more efficiently, or it's more efficient for our clients, we're finding, to get in the policy implementation meetings and to go through the policies and the checklists and to ask questions in a group that way. Okay? And we all learn from each other. And we want each district to be individualized, to feel like, you know, they're developing their policies and their policy implementation.
So how long does a process like this take with Trune?
So the policy implementation meeting is usually, it's usually, I think, three hours, two and a half to three hours for two days. So it's usually over a two-day period. Now, let's say you get through the policy implementation meeting, and you just don't, you just don't feel like you've received enough individual attention, you have additional questions, no problem, you give us a call, we can talk about whether or not we set up another implementation meeting just for you, or we have a conversation to make sure that it's dealt with.
And that's basically through Zoom?
I'm sorry?
Zoom meetings, is that what I'm-
Generally speaking, generally speaking, it's through a Zoom meeting that we do that. And, you know, if you'd like to see, we had, before we implemented our policies, we had Forest Hills in the Grand Rapids area as a beta client, go through the process and then post them online. And if you want, you can go on their website, and you can see, you know, what choices they made in terms of the policy sets. Now, Ms. Kaminski's question kind of suggested that we might take your current policy set and try to modify it, combine it with our current policy set. We don't recommend that. Okay.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Okay, good.
No.
Our idea is to scrap your current set-
Yeah.
-and to implement our new policy set with modifications that are individualized to your school district.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead.
Okay, your rate is that that's a fixed fee, and is that, like, when she asked about the extra interpretation meeting, or if there were any questions throughout the year for online support, or answering questions, or anything like that, is that, and I know you said you'd be more than happy to do that, but is that at an additional fee, or is that all included from the upfront fee?
That's all included with the upfront fee unless you want to draft new policies. So if you want to, if you want to draft new policies, then at that point, you know, if it's going to get real intensive, you know, if it's a, for example, a 15-hour project, then at that point, we'll talk to you about whether we need that on an hourly basis. Okay?
So she, so as long as we're not adding policies or changing policies, like if she calls, if the president calls you and says, hey, I want, you know, a further clarification meeting, I think we're not understanding, or, you know, hey, we want you to present here, or whatever the situation is, that's all included?
Correct. Correct. The, and I will say, we try to be proactive on these things. So for example, the ETS standards that came out, if you were a policy subscriber, in early December, you would have received an ETS policy along with the forms that employees, for employees to fill out with those ETS standards. So, you know, we try to, if we're seeing something trending and it needs to be done, then we hop on it as we're seeing it for our subscribers. Okay? We want to be, we want our clients to have the best governance system so that you're not dealing with issues caused by ambiguity in your policies, or issues caused by ambiguity that exists between your administrative guidelines and your policies because they're not integrated. We had certain policies that were updated at a certain time, and they're inconsistent with certain administrative guidelines that were never updated. We have that with our clients. We're trying to fix all that.
What was the cost?
I didn't bring it with me, but I had submitted it prior in one of my memos. Do you know it offhand?
I do. The cost of the, the cost of the service is $7,000. The cost for the administrative guidelines is $4,000. The cost for the annual subscription fee is up to $2,500. We're never going to charge more than $2,500. We may not charge $2,500, we don't do anything. We just don't feel like it's right to charge if nothing's being done. But if something's being done, then we'll figure out the value of that, and we'll charge it up to a level of $2,500. We tried to make our subscription service very reasonably priced in comparison with other services out there because really, we see this as a service to our districts to improve their governance.
So basically, you would give us your policies, we would have time to look at them, we can, we'd have to join your implementation meetings?
Correct.
You said there's two of those, two days, three hours each, and then if we wanted to make any changes, we would have to contact you over the phone?
Yeah, if there's still any questions after the implementation meeting, you would contact us over the phone. We have a woman in our office, Barb Feldcamp, who really troubleshoots issues that districts might have, you know, if something's not opening, or something's not appropriately received, we've got, you know, that administrative support, but then also you have, you know, whatever attorney you would like, you could call to try to get legal support for any questions that you might have on your policy as well.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Liza.
Can I just clarify one thing really quick?
Sure.
Those initial implementation meetings, the two, and it may have been three days when I spoke to Captain, those are in person, correct? Those would not be online?
No, they're online.
Or they are online?
They're all online.
They're online.
Okay.
Okay? But we, you know-
But those are one-on-one, those are not the group ones?
No, the implementation meetings are group, but if you buy, and you'd like an attorney to call you to talk with you about it, to take you through it, that's absolutely fine. I'd be happy to do it. You know, we, we've got a group of attorneys that are on our policy committee that would be happy to do that, to sort of, you know, take you through what's the best way to get from point A to point B so that you have your policies on. You know, so for example, policies, I don't like, one subscrib, well, I'll just say, Neola, for example, has a two-step implementation process for policies. It's not legally required except for student bullying, which is required to have a reading, and then an implementation by Michigan statute. So what we, so what our bylaws allow for is for implementation of the policies after just one meeting. And we can take you through how to implement it, what would require two steps, and all of those things. And I, and I would say two things about the implementation meetings. One is that, if you would like, you can audit one before making your choice, be happy to do that. And two, we could give you references so that you could call them to discern the value and whether or not there's been appropriate support through the process.
If I may ask you again, I'm sorry, you said-
Sure.
-Grand Rapids, did I hear you say Beta?
Forest Hills.
No, Forest Hills. I know locally, I think Van Buren is a policy subscriber locally, Oakland ISD, under my phone, I don't have the map of everyone in the area that's-
Did you say Oakland ISD?
-that's a subscriber, but yeah, but those are, those come to mind. Let me, yeah. But we have, I think we have 72 or 73 districts throughout the state right now that are subscribers.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Administration? Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate all the information-
Absolutely. Very nice meeting you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions while we're still in study session? Anything from your reports that you need any follow-up on? Okay, with that, if we can, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn the study session, support.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn for Ms. Kaminski, supported by Ms. Elzayet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll... Oh, I apologize, yes, okay. We forgot about the board terms. Where's Kristen? I don't know if you guys were up here.
Do we have to open back up? What do we have to do?
No, we didn't vote yet.
Okay.
We didn't vote yet, I apologize. I guess we had-
We voted. It's okay.
Well, we can still bring it up about the board terms. I know that there were some questions about that.
You can bring it up in the regular meeting.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, thank you, motion to adjourn, we were all voted, five-minute break, and we shall come back.